I just told you one thing. I still have the stuff.
Hey, are you?
Oh, Mr. Trump.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know what you're doing. Are you an executive? I don't know what. How did you get up such high somewhere?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
Well, it's mostly.
That's judicial. You can put JP jail, right?
Well, no, actually, they don't. I couldn't.
They told me. What was it? Oh, come on. That's no fun.
This is where I come through. Or Brazil, which, what do you go by this? Whatever you love. Love you. It changes every week, so I don't know.
It's time.
Can I?
How good is to you?
Yes, we are. All right, I'd like to call this work session to order. I don't believe we need any. Roll call, do we or do we not?
Oh, I'll call roll. Okay.
I don't remember.
Councilman Swanson.
Here, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel. Councilman Eland. Councilman Hollander.
Here.
Councilman Hammond.
Here.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Here.
Councilman Baker.
Here.
Okay, all right. We obviously are here for a work session on the budget for St. Charles County for 2025. We have invited, you know, the elected officials. We have, I know that we have one in the crowd. And I think that what we will do is start off with anybody here on the council that has any, any particular questions that you'd like to bring up about the budget. I know we do have this handout that was put together on the budget request funded and unfunded. If anybody would have any questions for Joanne or, or Bob on those particular things. Mr. Braz.
Are you talking about like different things maybe that you'd be interested?
Yes, yes, sure.
Well, this is.
Whatever you want.
This was sent to the council members. It's about the mounted patrol for the police department. I did talk to Captain Hunt and also talked to Chief Friss about it. So if you saw the, the presentation that they put together was actually pretty nice. They did a really good job of putting everything in there and what some of the expenses and stuff were. But talking to some of the leadership in the police department, of course, they would rather spend money on tactical gear and stuff like that, which I completely understand. But in my view, the mounted patrol would be totally cool for a county of our size and with the amount of parks we have, the different, the fairs and parades and stuff. So I'd met with the two officers that are the horse people who I explained to them that you couldn't, their original proposal was to be a, a, the full-time mounted patrol, where it would be full-time riding horses and full-time going into parks and stuff like that. And in my view, to start something off that heavy right away is not too realistic. It's kind of a output of resources and things like that. So as I sat down and went over some of the stuff, I said, what about doing a, buying, like, so the budget would be for a horse trailer, buying two horses that are trained. And the hard cost would be $60,000 for the hard one-time cost for a trailer. The F-150s and the trucks that they have or that they got take-home trucks would already be utilized to be able to pull a trailer such as that. And I met with the Parks Department, met with John and Ryan and with our new horse palace or whatever you want to call it, there's all kinds of barns, there's all kinds of stalls, there's all kinds of places to put two horses. And there are already half people that are working. Now, you could say that there'd be an expense, but I don't know how you'd figure it because you already got people there working. The officers would go out and work with the horses on their off time. And when they're working the horses, running the horses, running them in the arena, they would do that as a hobby for, to them. So if you had, you'd have an umbrella policy and some other things, that would fix, fix, fixing that $60,000 budget. And then you would have an annual cost of veterinarian would be about 2,000 a year. The farrier would be about 3,000 a year for two horses. And the hay and grain would be about 3,000 a year. So the overall budget after you made the initial purchase, purchases of tack, trailer, stuff like that, would be about 10,000 to 15,000 a year, plus the overtime of the, of the officers when they were working the affairs, like doing the parades or doing the county fair or doing certain events. Now, you know, you could say, well, that's a lot of money for that, but I really think it's important. Like, when we have the color guard come out to our events, we had them come out to the rodeo, we had them come out to our different parades, it is so good for community spirit. It's so good for the police department. And people love our police, they really do in this community. So I think the mounted patrol, the St. Charles City has mounted patrol. They, the, the leadership may not particularly like it, but once it got started, it's really appreciated by the community. And so it's important that, they, it's important to them. So I would like to add that funding for that initial 60,000 for the startup cost and then 10,000 a year. That doesn't include the overtime. And if, if the council thinks, you know, this is worth trying, then we try it. If it don't work, then we just sell the stuff. But I think it will work. They've been talking, these two officers have been trying to get this mounted patrol going for some time. And now that we have a horse barn, it kind of goes with it, you know? So that's just, I don't know how, where the budget comes from. I haven't talked to, I talked to John about this and I talked to Ryan about it. I talked to the police chief about it, but we didn't really sit down and figure out, well, here's where the funding would come, this or that. And whether or not the county executive agrees or not agrees, I understand. It's just, and you could consider it fluff, but I think it's important for.
So just so you know, we have never been approached with this proposal. It came up once before and I was told that I had said no, so I called the chief and said, what did I say no to? Because I must have been semi-conscious. And he said, I never asked you because I am totally opposed to it. And I have told the officers no. And so I have never seen the presentation that you're talking about, nor has the county executive. So I, I don't know what they're proposing. Some of the things you said, we can't actually do. We can't have a mounted patrol and tell them that they should consider horse training their hobby. I mean, if we have a mounted patrol, we have to pay them for working with the horses. We have to pay them for handling the horses. I do know Ryan's told me he cannot board horses out there because when he has these big events at the NEC, then he needs all 700 stalls. They, they rent all 700 stalls to the participants in these horse shows. And sometimes, as I understand it, Brian and John would know better because I have not been that involved with their events, but they have temporary stalls they put up because they're so crowded with some of these things. So we couldn't, the other problem that, that, as I understand it from the chief, when he told me that one of the reasons he said no is even if he had the horses at the NEC, to trailer them and get them to wherever they are is going to take a big hunk of the officer's day. The two officers who are apparently proposing this, who I've not met, I don't know who's proposing it, don't know a name, but they're SROs from what I've been told. So they're committed to the school resource officer program. So I guess if they want to leave the SROs and go to patrol, you know, as I understand it from, again, the chief explaining it to me when, when I called him that time, is, is that this takes them away from their duties, wherever they're normally stationed. And he just doesn't support it. When you talk about our color guard, the color guard practices on our dime. They look precision and they look good and they are a community asset, but they do that on our dime. We have to pay them to support them in an activity we've told them, we want them to fulfill. We can't say, oh, well, this is your, this is just something that's your hobby on your time. So, I mean, I, I haven't seen the presentation about why, you know, they think that we need this, but I do know that the chief of police who we've hired to run the place has said no to this. And so beyond that, I haven't said, well, bring them in and I want to hear what it is anyway.
Well, and when Kirk gets here, he can speak for himself, but when I spoke to him, he was saying that if you're going to spend that kind of money, 60,000, 100,000, whatever it is, he would rather go to tactical gear or something else. And I understand that perspective, but as council members, we're elected to this county too. And so it's like, I think we have a lot of parks, we have a lot of things. Some of the stuff you're talking about is getting into the weeds and I get it. I can, I'll send the proposal out to everybody again. But what they were asking for, the beginning, the big, the beginning proposal was full-time, being full-time mounted patrol. But I don't think, I don't even think that's a great idea right now. I think get it started. But training the horses is trained by somebody else. That's in that fee, that 20,000 per horse, that includes training. And then the additional stuff, what you're talking about, if they have to go work the horse once or twice or three times a week, I don't know that particular stuff. And if you have to pay them when they do that, I understand that. But they didn't, didn't say they would have to be paid, but if you're saying they do, then that's a whole nother story. But they would all keep their SOS job or their, or whatever it is. Yeah, they would keep those jobs, it would, what they would like to do. So I mean, there's a lot of stuff in between this proposal. I understand that you got to kind of work out, but it's just something I'd throw out there. I think it's a great idea. Is it going to happen this year? I don't know, but I'm just throwing it out there because it's been kind of talked for several years. And I apologize, I thought you saw the proposal.
I've never seen it. And, and I don't, again, I don't know who the, these officers are, but there's nothing to say they're the ones who would be chosen for the unit. I mean, we have.
Well, that's, that's fine, too. Yeah, if you got to interview for it, whatever the process is, I don't know. I'm not saying that they're the ones. I'm just saying it's a great idea, I think. Now, I might not have an agreement.
Joe, I agree with you. I think it'd be a great idea. And for them to give up two stalls.
That's ridiculous. You're going to give up two stalls. Yeah, I agree with that. Yeah, that's not a reason, yeah. And John, we looked at that barn and there's one barn, it's not that one smaller barn, it's not even used. We talked, that was the barn I was talking about. That small 30 by 60 or whatever it is. But we don't have to, yeah.
I always use when we were out there that day, but there are shows, multiple shows a year that all the barns are used as well as temporary stalls. So, I mean, we would, it would reduce our renewable stall count.
Okay, that's fine. That, we don't need to, but me and Dave, if there's other council members saying it's a good idea, maybe we could sit, sit down and just see if there's a way to figure it out. I'm not saying that's what we're going to do this year, but I'd like to have a good conversation about it. Chief, we're talking about you.
Your ears must have been burning, chief.
You should have, you should have been in a, in a bad traffic situation for a few more minutes.
We want two, we want two mounted police officers.
Now, Kirk, I kind of told them what we talked about. We don't agree on a part. Yeah, but, so what we're talking about, we're moving it to, instead of the full-time proposal that you got, we're talking about doing it, buying the initial gear at 60,000 and then letting these folks, whoever, Joanne mentioned that they would have to, you'd have to interview for the position, it's not going to just automatically be those two. I get all that. I'm not wanting to get into the weeds tonight, but.
Well, but my first point was is that we don't really know anything about it. I mean, the obvious is to come directly to you all instead of even requesting, you know, to come in to us, so.
Yeah, and I'll tell you what I'd say about it for the department. Our biggest complaint in the county is speeding, traffic control, reckless driving in our subdivisions and our main roads. And we're trying to stand up a full-time traffic unit. And our staffing levels, we're almost there to where we can do that, to where we can rectify these situations. We're not getting requests for mounted patrol or park patrols like that. Frankly, I don't see a, a need for it when we have technology with drones and infrared and helicopters and UTVs and bicycles. So I get, I think it's got more of a want than a need, just because our number one complaint is traffic, traffic stops eye and speeding in our subdivisions especially. And we are trying to address that. Horses are not going to do that for us. So my responsibility is to satisfy the citizens. I don't think this does anything for our citizens. It looks good. It's kind of cool for parades and stuff, but we don't have many of those. It's a PR tool and I don't think that's a good use of our, our dollars right now. If we had everything else we needed, it'd be great, but we're just not there. So in my opinion.
And your, in your perspective, which I understand.
Yes.
We're never going to have everything we need because you're going to always strive for perfection, as you should. So this is totally different than other stuff you're talking about because we're down 13 police officers and that's a whole nother topic. That has really nothing to do with this mounted patrol.
Right.
Nothing to do with it. They're two different things, PR versus having a fully staffed police department. They're two different things. And so you and I will continue to disagree on that, but we'll be able to work through it, you know, whichever direction we go in. Because it's the same thing with the, the color guard. I mean, you guys pay for that, but you like the color guard as far as I know because you're at most of the events when they're there.
Well, I think there's a big difference between color guard and mounted patrol as far as amount of time it takes. It doesn't take them long to dawn the uniforms, you know, the Class A uniforms for that and go march in a parade or do a, present or post the colors as opposed to the care of horses that they, they have to do. That's a lot more time consuming than presenting an honor guard. And, you know, from my perspective again.
There's not, there's not a whole lot of care that needs.
There's, but, but see Kirk, you, you, we were talking about a different aspect, then that proposal you got, I didn't know that you didn't afford to propose everybody, but we got a pretty good proposal, but that was a full-on thing.
Yeah.
So now if we take it, say, okay, let's take option B, that's totally whittled down and here's what they're trying to do, or here's what we would like to see. I, I'll send out to propose everybody. We don't want to hit the hammer the same too much longer, but I just think it's a great idea. And, you know, I think it's great for the community, especially in the, down in the rural communities and with all the parks and stuff.
Yeah, and I, I didn't push it up the chain of command because it, to me, it was something I wasn't going to support anyway. And you're just like, I see a lot of proposals for a lot of things that I just didn't think that fit the needs of the department at the time.
I understand.
It's been over a year and a half or so since that presentation came about.
No, I understand. Yes, okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman, just one point. You, you made the point that some other agencies utilize mounted patrol for different things. And, and that's true. You've got St. Louis City who has a mounted patrol, St. Charles who has a mounted patrol. But I think, number one, it's important to consider what the professionals think about utilization of resources. And I think if you talk to St. Charles City, at least my understanding is, and I know from my own personal experience with St. Louis City, they would, they would consider exactly what the chief just said, a want, not a need. And most, most of those organizations are moving away from mounted patrol, given the choice. So I think in, in this instance, need to take that into consideration, what the law enforcement professionals feel about this program.
Okay, all right. Moving on, okay? Do anybody have any other, anything else that you'd like to bring up? Yes, Mr.?
I, I have a concern for, regarding the county building inspectors. I, I think we need to. And I, I, I'm sure there's been some things sent up to personnel regarding the pay. And I think we definitely need to move on that before we lose a lot of inspectors. Some are getting ready to retire and, and to get a good qualified inspector, it's going to be difficult to, to find them for what we're currently paying our building inspectors.
So David, are you, what, would you propose to the, to the staff that they would have to get the average pay and see, see where we are with, with the average pay? Or, I mean, how do you, because we don't need to hire a consultant and all that stuff. I mean, that just takes too.
No.
Yeah, so.
I, I think some information's been sent up to personnel from community development, but I know one inspector's been offered $20,000 more to go out to Wentzville. So he doesn't really want to go to Wentzville, but we need to do something. Or we just go, you know, all these years, and, and I got to say, we've never had any disasters in this county from, from building, poor building practices that inspectors didn't catch. And it's a very important job. Now, if you want to start hiring people that aren't qualified to, to pay them, then you're going to start having problems. So I, I'm really concerned about this area and I would definitely consider raising their salaries at least one grade, maybe two.
Well, Councilman, it's already proposed in the budget to raise it one. And when you brought these other things up at the end of last week, we've already asked HR to do a special review for those folks in the early part of next year. So that, that may well, if we compare differently with other jurisdictions now, it may well move it up again next year. But it's already proposed to move it up one pay grade in the, in this 25 budget.
For the inspector one category now?
I'm sorry, yeah.
Should we raise the?
Well, that goes, Terry, Joanne?
Yes.
That goes in regard to the, pretty much a lot of them that I have concerns about, like the highway department. That time I was sent that email by John, he said 30 down. Now, what is it now, 12 or something? Do you know how many down we're on the highway department? Just about, do you know, John, 15?
Yeah, I think it's somewhere like the nine.
So when he sent that email, said, and you said it might have been a mistake, but did he start people at $20 an hour? You can't start a labor job at $20 an hour.
Now, that's where the pay range starts. So if they have experience, they may give them more than that, an advanced starting salary, recognizing their experience, but that's where the pay range starts.
Well, I guess my concern is, as a man of construction my whole life, if, and I'm not criticizing, please understand that, I'm just trying to figure out a way that we can fill our staff, fully fill our, our staff and our departments, so everybody, so we could take care of our county with weeds and highways and everything. So is there something that we need to, because you can say, well, that's all we can afford. Well, by not having people in place, you're not accomplishing anything, so.
We're not saying that's all we can afford. We're saying that every three years, we're studying the employees because markets move, I mean, very definitely, especially the last two or three years, the market's been moving. We're not always going to be ahead of the curve. We have a group of positions that we're now studying every year because they're so critical. We can't study every single position in the county every year. And really, all that does is start a war between us and the cities. But, you know, we have a critical list, as I just said. We study that, all of law enforcement's on the critical list, all the criminal officers, the police officers and the sheriff's deputies.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
May I inquire, Bob?
Bob, Mr.? Mr. Stewart.
How, how much are we spending in this budget on, on salaries?
137 million. 137 million dollars. And I, as I reported at, at the last, I was just looking at.
137?
Million.
Pardon me?
Million.
137, 137 million. What did we spend last year?
Well, I was just, I, I don't have the number for you exactly on that, but I was just looking shortly before the meeting started. And in the last five years, I just shared it with Kevin Colleen in the back here, last five years, we've raised our, just our, our pay increase percentages have increased 34% in the last five years now, including 2025's raise. So, you know, I think that's a more than.
Didn't we get a big jump last year?
No, the year before that.
It was the year before.
Yeah.
Right.
We went from 95 million.
Correct, that was a 12, that was a 12% raise in that year.
Okay, and that's the year that we, we brought everybody up to the, we, we looked at the number of years.
We moved people through the range.
Based on how long they'd worked.
Correct, right.
And of course, you know, the interesting thing here is that those are prob, the people who lived here or have been here that long are probably the least likely to leave. But in our wisdom together, we agreed on to, to go ahead and help those folks. So, you know, you, you just can't help everybody at once. And you can't help everybody even over a two-year period. So, I mean, I think, you know, I think, you know, if, if we're losing people at the bottom of the, of this, of the range, that's something we need to deal with. But, you know, it may be because we paid more attention to the people at the top and maybe they deserved it. So, you know, it's, it's, it's just a trade-off. But you can't, can't make everybody happy, so.
Well, one other thing I want to share too is, is the fact that, as Joanne mentioned, we review pay classifications every third year. So the 34% that I'm sharing with you here does not include if, if a pay grade is increased because of, of comparability to the marketplace. That's, that's over and above what percentage costs of living raises employees get each year. So I think the effort that we are undertaking and have undertaken now for several years is really more than earnest when it comes to trying to deal with the fact that we've got other people out there who, who might be paying a little more. We're trying to keep up with market. We have a process to do that. But I, I think you, you begin to set a dangerous precedent if you're going to say, okay, this group of employees or this group of employees or this group of employees need special attention outside of our process. If, if something is, is wrong, as Joanne's doing with, with the study that's been requested now, we'll take a look at it. But we have a process. And, you know, hiring is difficult in a lot of places, it's just not here. So I'll stop at that point.
I would remind you also, if I could, Mr. Chairman, that when you all asked us to look at the longevity, we also put in place at that same time that we stopped comparing ourselves with the middle of the marketplace and we moved to 60% of the marketplace. So we're, we're above the curve, we're, we're no longer, you know, sitting right at the middle of comparing ourselves. Now, you brought up Wentzville, that somebody's got an offer from Wentzville. The same year that we did that, Wentzville kind of said, oh, to hell with this, we're going to 70%. We're going to try to undo you guys. So they are paying 70% of market out there. They're going to be very difficult in this day and age in a city that employs, what, around 325 people, to beat in the marketplace when they're comparing themselves at 70%. But it's just how much of that race do we want to be in? We've established that we're comparing all jobs when we look at the marketplace to 60%. And we're reviewing every job at least every third year. And like I said, we have that critical list that we review every year. I don't know what more we can do to try to stay competitive, you know?
I don't know, like, I, I understand, Joanne, it's just difficult, I get it. But it's kind of like you got to try to focus on the areas where the problems are. And if in fact the police department is still down 13 officers, is that right, Kirk? 13 officers you guys?
Nine.
How many?
Nine.
Nine?
And five of those, we just gave it.
I know. No, I do know that, it just sounds good to say 13 down, right? No, but my point is though, is I, I was told by Captain Hunt today, he goes, well, the problem is, is, I don't know if this is true, but maybe people don't want to be pleased as much as they used to be. Is that, is that a problem?
It's getting better. We're seeing, our numbers are ticking up a little bit for our advocates. We're testing every month, we're at all our standards, so we have to be more shout-out and say what we want. But the numbers are pretty consistent.
I mean, so it's like with, where, where's Kevin at? Oh, I mean, like, do we market? Do we like have, should we do positive marketing for police and highways and like market, like what a great place to come work, you know, do it on, I don't know, I'm not an advertising guy, but should, maybe like make it all positive and that's why a mounted. advertising guy, but should, maybe like make it all positive and that's why a model patrol would look great in our commercials? No, I'm just teasing. But, no, stuff like that, just trying to get people to want to come, why, make the county, make it a great place to work. And I don't know, I'm just saying, we can't have a.
We have a couple words up now with the police department, we have our social media platform, and all the other jobs.
Okay.
We, we did have some positive feedback on one of the pieces, didn't we, on, on people applying for jobs?
Yeah, we had a big, we had a, a big applicant day, and a number of the departments, Jeff Smith got like thirty-one legitimate applications for dispatcher out of that. Dan got some, PD got some, some of the other departments got some. And, and we've been running, to your point about, let's make this place, you know, out to the public for what it is, is a great place to work. We've been running a seven-month campaign. Every month, we've highlighted another part of the police department out on social media. We've gotten good feedback from that. So, you know, one of the things that's attractive to people about working for the St. Charles County Police Department is that we have so many opportunities for a career. You don't have to come and be a patrolman if you don't want to. You can do your time on the road. You can apply for the detective bureau, apply for, you know, cybercrime, apply for a task force, they, they have any number of different things. That a lot of these folks who are choosing that as a career, they want those options. So, I mean, we have a fully certified bomb team, one of the few in the area. We're as big, I think, as anybody right now in our bomb team. SWAT teams, fifty-two members. Our local municipal police departments participate with us. Drones and drivers and, you know, they are highly competitive in terms of the tools that they use to go out and serve in high-risk warrant situations, or barricades, or, you know, hostage situations. So, I mean, it's a great police department, and we should be very proud of it. They do amazing things. And that's why we try to spend the money on those amazing things.
I understand.
All right. Do we have, Ms. McCullough, are you here for a purpose? I think you are, right? So.
Well, I'm open to purpose. I just wanted to thank the task force, give me the opportunity to come here.
Sure.
Have any complaints? I'm more here to just to see if you, we work with the county executive office and finance with regards to our budget and stuff like that. And that worked out very well and stuff like that, so I don't have anything. I'm just sure to answer any questions you guys might have. If you don't have any, that's fine. Don't feel like you have to come up with any, Joe.
Well, you know, as a matter of fact, you brought this, this line item, it's quite excessive. No, I'm kidding.
Yeah.
Well, we're, we're pleased that you're happy with, with the budget.
No complaints, okay.
Could I ask you?
Yes, ma'am.
There's been a lot of discussion on the council over the last few years about how long it's taken cases to get tried. And I know COVID had a lot to do with all of that. But what is your impression now? Are we moving these cases? Are we getting these people out of the holding cells in the county, in the jail, and get these people on the road to whatever?
So, Dan Keane sends me over paperwork. Originally, it was who's ever been there over five hundred days or whatever. And we got rid of all those people but one.
Don't want to know how you got rid of them, but.
Through trial, through trials were pleased. One of them is a, is a psych. And so we're just trying to figure out what's going to happen on that. But now we're, we're down to, you know, he, he sends me a list whenever it hits five hundred days. Because as you know, it generally takes about a year and a half, and there are some cases that have been older than that.
Yeah.
But those are people that, you know, disappeared or got lost in COVID. And, you know, I hate to keep blaming COVID after all these years, but that seems to be still hanging around with, with trying to get trials.
And the public defenders. I mean, not to say blame them, but, you know, they have high case loads and, you know, that kind of thing. So, yeah.
But it's, it's, it's being whittled down and.
We've got plenty of judges. We just need a few more public defenders.
We have plenty of judges, and I think we even have a couple of, I think, who's over here now? Fraley is hearing some things, I think, and so is.
Is he still hanging around?
He's still hanging around. And so is Rick Zare.
Yeah, we were just talking about Rick earlier. I wasn't sure if he was still a lot.
He's still here. He's still here.
Anyone have anything? Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Baker.
This is probably more for John Gray. Page one fifty-eight, just refresh my memory on our stormwater, or storm.
Thank you, sir.
You can ask that question.
Before you go to that, can I just?
What, what, yes.
I just a compliment.
Yeah, one, one last thing from Joanne.
For Joe and for Peter. And because when I first called Joe and said, hey, I'm going to send you these lists of over a thousand days and over five hundred days, he didn't say, get off my phone. He said, please not look into every one of them. And he did. And every reason why they hadn't moved was legitimate. But they've managed to get most of those cases moved.
Yeah, good job, Joe.
Okay, Mr. Baker.
Stormwater. Yeah, stormwater.
Not as interesting.
In our, in our budget this year, we've got about eight point seven for stormwater. What, what part of that is DNR money again? Is that five million? Not, not counting heritage. I'm talking about something.
Mr. Baker, what page did you say?
One fifty-eight.
So, including heritage, which is also included in that eight point seven, so you have apples and apples, seven point five of that is, is money coming from the state.
So, and, and that's kind of just a one-time deal? I mean, we, we, there's no guarantees that we're going to get that every year?
Right. They were, they were grants that we applied for and that we secured in the air state. Our.
Okay, so really, the seven point five is the heritage, and we're televising, I think, are we televising a bunch of, bunch of sewers with that money?
Correct. And then above that line, there's the two hundred and seventy-four for professional services, which is funding for the Sediment Hills watershed study. And then part of that eight point seven does include some miscellaneous improvements, similar to what we're doing, like off of Greensboro, although Greensboro's in the twenty-four budget. But if somebody sets aside for these kind of small, small projects that are being identified locally, that can be done immediately.
So we have that two hundred and seventy-four thousand, which is line item in the same page, that's for a watershed study for Sediment Hills. And we also, at tonight's budget, we have a million dollars for Crystal Springs and O'Fallon Hills stormwater study. So I guess my general question is, once these studies are, are completed, I mean, I don't want to just put these on the shelf and do nothing with them. So what, what are we going to do? I mean, we're, they're going to highlight problems, and they're going to highlight budget, budget issues. And then, then we've got problems that we're not aware of, but we can't do anything about it.
Yeah. So the plan that we put together in this budget was kind of based upon the council's direction as a whole, at least as the part that we kind of, what we thought we heard, and it's not, that's not the case. Please correct me, was that, it was determined that the best thing to do was to kind of televise the cameras, our, our public infrastructure, determine where we have problems and where we don't. And part of that eight point seven does include quite a bit of money for if there's significant problems for those storm pipes to be, to be lined. So at the end of this calendar year, our public infrastructure, the, the storm surge should be the majority of them in good condition. The watershed study on Sediment Hills and the, we're doing three watershed studies, four in total. So we have Sediment Hills, we have O'Fallon Hills, which I think Councilman Hammond's aware of, the Crystal Springs, which is over there by the convention center, and then right there behind the kind of near Harsh Bowl, and that area called Trip Four, which flows into, they're down by the baseball field. So we're going to look at those watersheds and identify what are the improvements needed there. And after that study, you're correct, that we'll kind of have an inventory of them. Are there additional improvements that are needed? And be able to actually put a price tag on them. Because one of the questions that the council asks, well, how much do we need to spend to rectify some of these issues that we, that we have? And we really don't know, because we've not studied to determine what the improvements would be. What we do know, at least from the, the grant money that we've been able to receive, that at least the public infrastructure will be in good shape. It's just, is there additional infrastructure needed that's, you know, that was never built when those subdivisions were, were developed? And what that price tag is, we won't know until we get the watersheds.
But as of right now, we don't have any source of funding to address these, the solutions that are going to be highlighted on these watershed studies.
Correct. We have not identified a funding source for these unknown projects or what they may cost.
So, I know, we had talked about it at one time, the, the parks use tax. And to give the council the option to use ten percent of that for stormwater problems, based, I mean, we've got these watershed studies. I know this would have to go to the voters, but that's still something that I think, I, I think we as a county needs, need to consider. That we're, we're gonna, we're gonna highlight all these potential problems, and then these things are going to sit on the shelf and do nothing. And I don't think that's, that's, that's where we want to go with this. I mean, we're spending good money. We, we need to fix these problems that, that are going to be highlighted. And right now, we don't have a method to do that. But we could ask for DNR funding, but we may not get it. And by the time we get around to these studies, they're going to be outdated. And we're going to have problems that are, are going to be compounded, or some other issues highlighted on them. So I think we need to be prepared. So next year, when we've got a detailed report of what's all needed, we got a budget idea, so we can do something about it. So I still think we, we need, I mean, if I'm not mistaken, that parks tax, you know, went from sixteen million when, when, when it first came around, to now it's at twenty-eight million. I mean, I'm, I'm sure splash pads are great, but five point eight million dollars for that versus people's flooding, I have a problem with. So I, I still would like to get something on the ballot, let the people decide whether that's something they would like to do, was to allow the council ten percent of that money to, to address stormwater. And I remember there were some issues with police, I think, Joanne, you had brought up, the police were looking for, for something out of that too.
What I was telling you about is historically, there'd been some conversations on the council about the possibility of going to the voters to split the use tax to a law enforcement purpose.
Split it fifty-fifty?
There was never, at least that I remember, there was never a specific number that the council settled on that they would seek. It never got that far to go to the voters.
Well, I would, I would think, just, just my opinion is that if, if, let's just say that we, we did go to the voters, and they did approve some kind of division of the use tax, okay? Let's say for, you know, part, part of it for, you know, public safety, police, okay, and other parts, parks, then that would free up money. I would, you agree with me? It would free up some money for other things, such as stormwater or whatever. Is that, or am I overreaching there?
That's an old trick that they, they used the legislature for years. You know, you're supposed to do gambling because the money was going to go to the schools. But then they took the money they were using for the schools and put it over here, put the gambling money there. So, so they used to do that, but I, I don't think we should.
Well, Terry, now all that money's going to parks, all of it, a hundred percent.
Yes, yeah. There's, there's, there's no question that, that, that that should be, or I think it, it should be at least a point of discussion.
I just think that.
Use tax.
We come around to this part next year, we've got these watershed studies, we have some idea. And then, and then we got to look for how we're going to budget. I think we need to get a jump on this and, and be prepared for when this study comes back. These four studies come back that we're motivated to do something about it. And this is not the, the first issue that's come up over the last three or four years, where we've sat up here and said, boy, I wish we could use that use tax for something other than parks, okay? That's, that's been a, it's come up three or four different times. And, you know, at this point, we, you know, we, we haven't addressed that particular issue. So, you know, I, I think maybe it is something that we need to, need to look at, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Ask Mr. Baker a question. Did you, were you talking about the use tax? Or are you talking about that, that Great Rivers habitat, or Great Rivers?
The use tax.
The use tax?
Yeah.
Okay, because the, the Great Rivers money.
The regional parks tax.
The regional parks tax. That originally was written in such a way that it did deal with water sheds.
It did.
It did. And it's the way it was written. And the HBA, they were going to set up a whole new bureaucracy dealing with watersheds. And the HBA didn't like it at all. And actually got Senator Gross to go ahead and amend it. Now, when he amended it, did it still allow the money to be used for watershed?
No, we have a legal opinion that basically it has to be used for water issues within the parks.
Within the parks, okay. I was thinking that might be a, a source, but apparently not.
We could look at that. Because I, I really opposed that opinion when it first came out. I was absolutely convinced that we could use it for water problems in general, wherever they were, as long as it was public lands. And so they've had, Keith Hazelwood and I both agreed on that, actually. But John Watson had it looked at, and before Greg Dorman left, and Greg said, no, it's got to be within the parks. He did an opinion. And then Rory had one of his lawyers look at it again, and they agree that right now, because of the way we put it on the ballot, at least, we are limited to water issues within the parks.
But that could change via a ballot measure?
I don't remember that off the top of my head, because the legislature has messed with that underlying enabling legislation, but we could look at that quickly.
I know we have one more meeting, right, before the, before the budget.
Correct.
And next council.
We introduce the budget next Monday.
Yes.
Next Monday. So you think we could, just maybe get some.
I'd be happy to come in. And I know, I met with John and John, and, you know, we talked about some other issues, and I think we, we resolved those. But we still haven't, in my opinion, this issue hasn't been resolved of when we, these stormwater studies are completed, where do we go from here?
Nancy, I thought.
I was just going to say, in general, I mean, I think it's kind of tricky to go back to voters and ask them, basically tell them, we got too much money for the parks here. I mean, that could end up with, you know, cutting that whole thing off. Or, you know, somebody could, could come up with something that says, we don't need that money anymore. There's too much money coming out of that. So I'm just thinking, we have to look at it from a perspective of what voters are going to think about that, so.
They can vote no, though.
Well, yeah, but they could then offer something else, like let's cut the whole thing back, or cut it off, or who knows, like some sort of petition. I'm just saying, you know, we have to just think about these things before we come up with some kind of plan to, to take the life.
Yeah, step up here, sure.
Just hearing the discussion, I don't want to, I, I don't want the wrong image to be cast by, by what's being said here in some relationships. Nancy, when you're talking about the Parks Department making too much money.
I'm not saying that. I'm just saying voters might say that.
And, and the significant increase in the Parks revenues is generated predominantly by what used to be retail sales tax, because of the Wayfair decision and online commerce. So what's, what's really suffering here at the, at, for what the Parks Department is picking up in revenue, is really revenue that used to go to the capital projects fund and to the transportation sales tax fund and to the general fund. Okay?
Yeah.
That's why Mid Rivers Mall is so empty. And that's why every, you know, the large shopping centers around here are, are drying up. Because we've gone to retail commerce on, on the internet. And so it, it's not that the parks tax that was crafted back in the nineties, all of a sudden now is generating all this money. It's just a shift from one pocket to the other. And so I had, I think you have to be careful. The, the message that you send out, if you're going to talk about a budget measure, a ballot measure, rather, that, that you, you frame it accurately, that, that this is really money that was created by online commerce, and, and not this windfall of money that the Parks Department is receiving because it's now a use tax. Just, I think you just need to be careful about that.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's a windfall based on the sheer, sheer increase in the, in the amount of money observed, or we, we passed these, this tax in the last couple of years. It's gone up, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's, it started out at sixteen million, is now at twenty-eight million.
Wayfair was passed and went into effect three years ago?
What's Wayfair?
Three years ago. It's the United States Supreme Court decision that you can, in fact, tax sales to your state, even if there's no nexus between you and the retailer.
Okay.
But I think what Bob's saying, and we've talked about this any number of times, what, what people used to fund for government by going to their local retailer is not happening anymore. So now that money is being split off. Meantime, you know, like this year, we had a request for forty-four FTE. Were any of them absolutely foolish? Absolutely not.
Were any of them absolutely foolish? Absolutely not. Departments, full-time equivalent employees in the departments. We said no to people based on our ranking of how well they made their case to us. But, you know, there's others we would've liked to have gotten to. We just had no way to do that. We said no to nineteen out of the general fund and eight out of, uh, the Parks Fund for that.
But it gives us the op- it gives us this body the option of allocating some money, again, for this issue that we're going to realize when these, these studies are completed. Uh, which is, right now, we do, we do not, I mean, we don't have a funding source that's identified for this other than what we've already got in the budget, which, uh, prior years was at five hundred thousand. Now it's at eight point seven because of the DNR funding. That's, that may not be around. And, and like I said, we, we're funding four watershed studies.
But just remember, if you move a certain percentage of that money over to one very narrow thing like that, when you fix those capital projects, that money's still moved. And what we're saying we're short in is just the general fund to fund things like the prosecutor's office and additional people in the sheriff's office or additional people in community developments or staying up with the salaries in the future.
That comes out of this tax?
That, that potentially could come out of this tax too. And that's what those conversations by this council have been in the past, is should we do something along those lines? I think what the county executive was referring to is if you could take that, um, regional parks tax fund, which is about one point six million a year, if I remember correctly, and you had something like that available where it's a limited fund to begin with, it's a far more appropriate use or redistribution than it would be to move the use tax into a specialized fund like that.
Okay, is that, is that, is that, is that an option for us then, to, to, to go to a ballot measure for?
Well, that's what I was saying. We need to take a quick look at what they've done with this enabling legislation over the years, but that may well be.
Okay, that, that, that sounds good. I'll, I'll table this discussion till next meeting.
All right, um, does anyone on the council have any other particular budget issues? Administration?
Anything else? Derek, I think if you have anything you wanna raise.
All right, we will take a little break and come back here at seven and get things done.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the St. Charles County Council to order. We will begin with an invocation from Associate Pastor Brad Harris of St. Charles Bible Baptist, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Matt Swanson. Please stand.
Let's pray, may we. Lord, help us to just stop as we think of this week and be thankful to you. May we thank you for all things that you are and that you are to us and how good you are to us. And I pray that we have a heart of gratitude for each and every one in our county that serves in any way, in leadership, who've served and protect in every way. We're so grateful for those all around us who make up this community. And I pray that we just have a giving spirit to go along with our thanks for all the things we've been blessed with. I pray we commit to serve others and be giving and helping to others in our community and be thankful for what we have and praise you for all things. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to every republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Councilman Swanson.
Here ma'am.
Councilman Barazil.
Here.
Councilman Eland.
Here.
Councilman Hollander.
Here.
Councilman Hammond.
Here.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Here.
Councilman Baker.
Here.
Okay, thank you. We will begin tonight's meeting with public comments. Just a reminder that you will be limited to the three minutes that will be up here on the clock and...
Arnie Deenoff, Budget, Security and Requests.
Mr. Deenoff.
Good evening, members of council. First of all, I'd like to, Arnie C. A.C. Deenoff, county public advocate. First of all, I'd like to say happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Hopefully, everybody has a great joyous holiday. Hopefully, we could look out people that are less fortunate and try to help out people in our community with a lot of things. There's a lot of needs out there that I'm coming across. One thing that's very disturbing is downstairs, coming into security and going through the security checkpoint. It seems like that I was, had to take off practically everything on my clothing, belt, practically lost my pants, my hat. The officer kind of got a little unprofessional downstairs. I had to be patted down. He took everything out of my pockets. I said, "There's only plastic. It's not things that are going off." It still went off and it went off five times. And even after all that and I was degraded, treated wrongly, it seems like it gets harder and harder coming in this building each and every time while the two officers downstairs continually give free passes to certain people that they want to wave on through. And Mr. Hollander goes through security, Mr. Hammond goes through security, other people go and bypass security. So if we're going to have it, it needs to be for everybody or nobody. But something must be wrong with the metal detector and I think it needs to be calibrated and looked into because obviously it's not working well or right. If everything was off my body, including half of my clothing, and I was degraded and embarrassed in front of other residents by these two deputy sheriffs downstairs, they should be ashamed of themselves in the way that they conducted themselves and laughed the whole entire time. That I think you need to look into and make sure that the machine's even working correctly because in O'Fallon, it didn't work correctly and they had to replace that machine about six months ago. So the next thing I'd like to do is, Mr. O'Sullivan and to the administration, Ms. Lycom and to the two assistant administrators, you know, under chapter 610, it should be liberally construed and constricted, or liberally construed and identified in chapter 610 of Open Meetings Act. I've asked you for the boards and commissions of the director of administration that gets $215,000 and is probably going to get a $25,000 pay raise this year if it goes through with the purported budget. And the two assistant directors are going to get a hefty pay raise. And all I ask is what boards and commissions do you serve on? And Rory O'Sullivan wants me to write a check for 10 cents. I'm not asking for it to be given to me on paper or printed on paper. How deliberate and how, how can I get that across to you, Mr. O'Sullivan, while you look at your paper and you live in the city of St. Louis, you're a resident there and not in compliance with our county charter? I would like it to be delivered email electronically like chapter 610 states and there should be no charge. This is basic information and you should be embarrassed of how you run your office and run your administration. And the last thing I want to talk about is we need more police officers and patrol and the amount of patrol is a waste of money. There's going to be a lot of travel time and a lot more expense than what's on the table.
Thanks, sir.
Mary Hood, regarding stormwater source.
Oak Ridge Estates is requesting assistance through the stormwater program to help preserve the creek and the spillway to the creek from excessive erosion due to the runoff of water from overfilling of the Oak Ridge Estates Lake by the large amount of water entering the lake from the area surrounding the lake, specifically Chadwick Retention Pond. The primary overflow pipe for the Oak Ridge Estates Lake is not adequate for the volume and velocity of the water that is entering from the retention pond located at Chadwick. The problem has been occurring for some time. The fixes that have been implemented on our part to date are not working. The creek erosion is occurring at a very fast rate, sending tons of silt downstream and into the rivers and deepening the channel as well as the loss of land, causing trees to fall at the creek's edge due to the widening of the creek. Due to the building up of the subdivision west of us, the amount of water runoff into the creeks that feed our lake and the velocity of the water has increased dramatically, causing many of the problems we now face. No provisions were made at that time by St. Charles County or those builders who designed those neighborhoods to control the runoff into a lake that cannot keep up with the amount of extra water being routing into our lake. The Corps of Engineers have inspected the dam and the lake in 1980. That report was ignored or not taken into consideration when building the retention pond and adding the extra volume of water and the velocity of the water into that creek which feeds the lake that's already taxed. Okay. So the pictures I'm going to show you are, the first one is Chadwick Retention Pond. The second one is the overflow drains. It's two 36-inch drains going into our creek, which is about 300 foot from the entrance to our lake. The third picture is the pipe that comes into the creek that feeds our lake. This comes underneath the street, Oak Ridge West Drive. The third one is that creek. It's flooding as you can see. The next one is the creek at normal level. So you can see it's quite a bit of difference.
Do you want to hand it?
The, the sixth one, you can see that the walkway bridge is underwater. This is the entrance before the bridge. This is the entrance of the creek into our lake. Behind the bridge is our lake. And the next picture is our bridge at normal levels. It should, the lake is overfull right now and this is, this is overfull. Okay. Third one is our spillway and you can see the about, the volume of water. The next one is the water going over the spillway, going down to the creek, erosion that, the erosion that we're occurring.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. You get the picture.
We certainly do.
Okay. But anyway, anything that you can do would greatly help us because it's a lot of money and we do not have that money to fix this. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Go ahead.
It's Tim Gregory.
I'm also with Oak Ridge. I'm the president of the Homeowners Association. Mary wanted me to kind of fill you up, fill you in on what we've tried to do to prevent this problem. Back when we got the 12 inches of rain in, was it September of last year? Our creek from our overflow went from about six feet wide and four feet deep to about 20 feet wide and about 10, 12 feet deep just from that rain. The 1980 report states that that levee is in danger of collapsing someday. Thank God it hasn't happened yet. On the backside of that levee is that creek. And if the levee goes, so do the houses on the other side of that creek from another subdivision. I don't even know the name of the subdivision. There's about four or five of them down that row that is going to get just, I don't know how bad damage. If it could wipe out the houses or just give mortar damage, I have no clue. When it first happened, FEMA was up here. I've never jumped through so many hoops and kissed so many butts and made so many phone calls and refilled out and refilled out and refilled out paperwork to just get told that the end, that there's nothing they can do. And I seriously, I worked for over a year with these folks. Six months going up once a week up to O'Fallon City Hall, film out forms, talking to people, and they were very receptive and very understanding. It's when I had to deal with people only on the phone that it was much easier to say, "Sorry, dude, we can't do anything." But we had, just recently, we had the eight-inch rain. And again, I didn't know chunks of rock could move that far, that easily. I mean, it was unbelievable. I mean, we're talking huge rocks and the entire creek was full. It was only four, four to six feet deep, but it was full of this riprap. And when we got that rain, it just took it all the way. So we're scared to death. We're scared to death. Initially, we got quotes, but I don't know where they came up with it, for almost $100, almost a million dollars, 900 and something thousand. We've reworked it, re-talked. It's down to about $100,000 to stabilize that levee, and that's what we're asking help for. My time's up.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
It's final speaker.
All right. Next up would be an oral report from the county executive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have, you have some highway stuff, John. John's going to go ahead and make a short report here on the decision that was made by the Highway Commission last month, I guess earlier this month, to go ahead and fund the entire third lane from Wentzville to Warrington, as well as additional third lane on I-64 up to I-70 and the curve. And John, just tell them the good news. I think we, we got everything we were hoping for.
Yeah. Steve and I and some others from the county went to the Missouri Highway Transportation Commission meeting about two weeks ago, and they released the results of the design-build competition out in Wentzville. One thing that's exciting is that this will be the largest construction project in the state's history, over $600 million for improving I-70 in St. Charles County out into Warren County. The project is scheduled to start in the spring of 2025, and as Steve said, I think we got about everything we want. The big thing, the big piece of it is the interchange at I-70 and I-64, that interchange and the S-curve that leads up to the railroad tracks. Currently, we've talked about, if you're going to get into either region, you got basically squeezed underneath that tracks, you got two lanes in either direction. Well, this project proposes building five lanes heading west, another four lanes heading east, so nine lanes of traffic underneath that railroad bridge. Well, obviously, it won't be that railroad bridge. It'll be a new, a new bridge. That five lanes heading west will be three through lanes and then two lanes that basically will feed between the Highway Z interchange out to Wentzville Parkway as you head east. One of the problems that you have is people from Wentzville Parkway having to merge into traffic quickly. Well, they'll have them exhilarating all the way to Highway Z as you head east. So that's a tremendous improvement of eliminating that bottleneck. That bottleneck is also caused because as people back up on 64 as they approach, there's not enough lanes to kind of get them onto 70. 64 is going to have three lanes in both directions from Highway K out to 70, as well as an additional lane as you merge from 64 and head west. This graphic here, also done by our communications department, does a nice job of showing that as you exit Z, right now, you kind of merge through the traffic. So you got all these people coming heading west from 64 to get into Wentzville, and if you want to get off at Z, you got to work your way through all that traffic. Well, right there at the top of the screen, they're actually going to have a great separation. So if you're going to Highway Z, you'll cross over the traffic getting onto 70, separating that, making it a much safer addition for folks getting in that part of Wentzville. Forestale. So in addition to constructing three lanes on I-70 from Wentzville out to Warrington, in addition to adding lanes on I-64, we are getting a brand-new interchange at Forestale. When you first look at it, it will be, it looks very unique as it is. It'll be the first, what they call diverge about interchange, full diverge about interchange built in the state, in the state of Missouri. There was, there is a similar design in Kansas City where they built a roundabout on one side, but this really takes the things in St. Charles County that you hear probably a lot of folks complain about in interchanges and combine them all into one. So it's going to be interesting what the public thinks. So you have the divergent diamond where you have the crossover like at Fifth Street or at Mid Rivers Mall Drive, and then a roundabout. So the crossover here is not going to be at a signal, but it actually occurs at the roundabout on either end of the interchange, separated by these two bridges that are separated. So it's a very unique design that came out of the design-build process, but the traffic operations of it are really amazing. I mean, it looks like it's a good solution, although very unconventional as you, as you work your way through it. Overall, like I said, it's a grand slam of a project. It's going to be a good project that really helps the western part of St. Charles County continue to grow and expand, and it also feeds into all the great things that are happening across our county line into Warren County.
What's the timeline for all of this?
What now?
The timeline.
So they're going to start construction spring of 2025, and it's anticipated to be done by '28, so relatively quick timeline of construction. They anticipate that the traffic impacts will be minimal. I can't see how that's possible, but I'll be an optimist with the rest of the MODOT crew that's putting this project together and delivering it to the residents of St. Charles County in a timely manner.
Thank you. Can you send me an email with those slides so I can share them out?
Yeah. Kevin will email them to me, and I'll send them out to Claire, and Claire can send them out to the council.
Yeah. You can't, you can't believe how many people have asked me about this, you know, constantly, and I told them, "I don't know. I just saw they were going to spend $660 million, though, so I think we're going to get an awful lot."
And what really makes us, you know, I think, a little additional sighting is that back in 2018, we were in a much different place with state funding. The state was not doing new studies. They were only maintaining what they had, and the county council at that time said, "We know that we have a problem at the interchange at I-70, I-64. We know we have a problem at the bottleneck at Wentzville that needs to be addressed." So they voted to fund the design study, a pre-design study that led into the design-build and got this project ready, that shovel-ready term that we used at that time in 2018. And because of that, we were able to capitalize on all this money that came in through the ARPA funding, that ultimately came also through the General Assembly and the state appropriations to make this project really much more than just improvements on I-70, but improvements on I-64, this, and the interchange, and I-70, and at Forestale. So it really was an investment in foresight of the council, the county executive, on making that investment when we really had no, we didn't have a plan on how it was going to get built. We didn't know if the state was going to come out of this essentially maintenance-only mode, but that commitment really led to this great project. So I thank the council for that investment.
Thank you, sir. John, my.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Chair. Go ahead.
Tell about the, I was surprised they're going to actually replace the existing pavement that's in the water.
As we were sitting through the Missouri Highway Transportation Committee meeting, they're presenting the details of the project and leading to their slides, and they're showing how bad this upgrade. So over the years, this section of I-70 are just being pounded by trucks. And if you've driven that area out by Forestale, there's a section of pavement there that seems like they replace every year. They go, they dig it out, they place it in another section right next to it, fails. And they're showing how the subgrade, because of that pounding and the base getting clogged up with dirt, basically is just holding water. And so it's like a big sponge underneath this pavement, and that's why the pavement just continuously keeps on failing and failing and failing during this whole next section. And so as I looked over to the county executive, I said, "We're not going to get anything at the I-70 interchange and 64. I mean, we're not going to get what we want at Forestale." This is just, I just started feeling really bad. So as they led to it, and we actually got all these other improvements, it really is just a great value. The consultant, the design-build team, you know, when they talk about best value, I mean, this is a project that I think the state of Missouri can be proud of, that they get best value. They're going to get brand-new pavement on all six lanes of I-70, plus all these great improvements at the interchange.
Mr. Baker?
Yeah. So two questions. Is the railroad bridge getting taken down and rebuilt?
Yes. So they will build a temporary bridge slightly to the east.
A temporary bridge?
A temporary bridge that the train will actually be, you know, because they got to be able to maintain service. That train is critical to commerce, not only to St. Charles County, but across the nation and primarily to the Wentzville plant, GM plant. So they need to maintain that operation, so they'll build a temporary bridge, take down the existing bridge, and then build the permanent structure and the existing alignment because they obviously can't build the permanent structure where there's this kind of zigzag in the track. They can do it for a temporary basis, but they eventually will then build a permanent. So it's a, that's a complicated piece of construction that that million-dollar investment that the council put into, part of that went into how is that maintenance of operation going to work with the railroad? And getting that railroad agreement in place was a critical part of that million-dollar investment that this council made to be able to show how that can be done, and that's what they're going to do.
The other question I had is, how vital was, were our lobbyists to help secure this funding for both, for this project?
Our lobbyists were effective with many of the other senators, except those that came from St. Charles County. I think they were, if I understand, our two senators were the only two no votes, I think, for the state funding, or were, were two of many, of the few no votes on providing general revenue to I-70. So our lobbyists were effective. Unfortunately, they didn't.
I think it was just one, John.
Maybe one?
One voter against it. I don't think anybody in the delegation that's still there voted for the actual user fee increase, and everybody voted for the budget that had this $2.8 billion, except for one, one senator.
Except one senator. So they were effective overall.
Chair?
Yes.
One other quick question. Highway 61 north of the interchange, Lock Mueller Group has been doing a study on it. I know I've been talking to Kelly over there. Have you guys been brought in on any of that?
Yeah, we are partnered with that as well. We did a study of 61 early on, and this is, that became the baseline for what Lock Mueller Group is doing with MODOT currently, and the focus of that is obviously safety and eliminating the, as many upgrades, but also being able to provide access to, you know, the various residences in that area.
Because I heard there was supposed to be an update to MODOT this past week by them, and I haven't heard back from her, if that happened or not.
I think that is coming, I don't remember being, we just talked to, I talked to MODOT last week. I don't think the update was available at that time, but there is funding of, I think it's $28 million in the step for improvements on 61 in two years, I think, is when that money comes available. But yeah, if you want more details, I can give you more as, as we learn on that project.
Yeah, I think they were going to say in December, they were going to have their first open house showing what the proposed, hopefully, outer road on 61 would look like to close out the last at-grade crossovers all the way down to Dietrich, with then the next overpass being at Highway W interchange, but that's still a very complicated area.
That's the, that's the general plan that we've, I've seen as well, and I've heard that that public meeting may be more in January or February.
All right. Just going to push back. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Yeah, just a couple more things. You mentioned, you asked about the lobbyist. A big, a big part of this success, I think, is we had, Tom Dempsey set up several meetings with Warren County. You were out there. We, we worked very closely with Warren County on the Forestale project, and we were actually, we were actually willing to ask you for permission to put $10 million into this if somehow it would guarantee that Forestale would be included. They were glad to take the money, but they couldn't make the guarantee. And Ed Hassager, who was number two then, is number one now, he called right up until the last day, said, "Steve, are you in, are you out?" But what we had done with the Warren County people and worked with them in Jefferson City is get the legislature, put another $40 million in for Warren County. Okay? Now you say, "Well, that, how's that help us?" Well, that extra $40 million then allowed them to go ahead and do everything that we needed done in St. Charles County. So, you know, when you talk about the process, sometimes, you know, you push a little bit here and it comes out there, and, and you're not quite sure, but actually, Ed called me, wanted me to tell him on Friday what we're going to do, and I didn't tell him on Monday because Friday afternoon, the governor actually signed that $40 million. I said, "Ed, you got the $40 billion from Warren County. We're not going to put any money in. If, if we can't get what we want, we'll talk to you about it later." So anyway, again, the fact that Warren County could get that extra money, I think, is the reason we got what we needed in Forestale.
Could I add to, because we've gone through this on a number of things. When our own delegation doesn't support us, our lobbyists have to go to legislators who frequently say, "So wait a second, your own delegation won't support this, but you want me to support it when it's not directly?" And they work very hard to convince people about why this is legitimate. It may not be philosophically acceptable to one or two members of our delegation, but it's overall important, both for the eastern region, for our county, for the state, and they do a really good job of that.
What was the reason? Do you know what the reason was for a senator to vote against this proposal?
Sometimes just philosophically.
We'll tell you who it is if you'd like. You can ask.
I'll ask you off camera.
All right. I believe the next thing on our agenda is the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Yes, Mr. Hammond?
Yeah, I'd like to remove change order number two with NEC LED lighting system.
Okay. Do I have a second on that? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that item has been removed. Are there any other items to be removed?
Motion to approve is amended.
I need a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we will come back to Mr. Hammond's change order that he would like to discuss. Go ahead.
Basically, the only problem I have here is, when they, is this the same electrical contractor that put in the lights in the arena? Yeah. Some of those lights are above the beams, so it casts shadows all over the arena. So they need to lower those to get them at least down even with those beams. So I don't know if you can negotiate that with them for this additional work, but they should have, they should have known better anyway. Just, I think if you look in the specs, there's a requirement for so many, what am I, what word I'm looking for? But so much concentration of light on.
It has an illumination spec to it. It should. So it should be illuminating so much light, and so what Dave is talking about is correct. If it's not proper, it needs to be redone.
We'll look into it.
Okay.
Okay. So that's all I have on that. So I made, I say motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, there is one item that removed, that was removed from the consent agenda. Is there any, anyone that would like to bring that off the table?
Yes. I would like to go ahead and bring that back off the table.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we now are discussing the item that was removed, which is the equestrian debris vacuum trailer.
So after, I had a discussion with Mr. Graham, and they have other needs for this debris vacuum that they can use in other areas, so I'm no longer opposed to it, and I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we have removed that agenda item and passed it. Okay, we have one bill for final passage, Bill number 5347.
Bill number 5347, an ordinance approving execution of an agreement for the use of CMAQ funds for the installation of fiber optic cables to interconnect traffic signal controllers at 16 signalized intersections in St. Charles County.
Okay. Discussion, anyone?
I have discussions.
Yes, Mr. President.
Is this you, John, or is this John Lyons or you?
Go ahead.
Is this, is this just voting on the funding first? Or this process has been bid out and there's a contractor in place?
This is voting on acceptance of the federal grant that CMAQ funding for the project, and then it would go through design and then construction bidding. So this is just the interim agreement between us and the state for the funding.
So it's just for the funding? So this is not awarded to a contractor because we didn't see any bids or anything?
Correct. We will design the project, and then there'll be the, then you'll see the bids for that as well as the design contract. This is just the, the funding agreement between us and the state for the grant.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number 5347, an ordinance approving execution of an agreement for the use of CMAQ funds for the installation of fiber optic cables to interconnect traffic signal controllers at 16 signalized intersections in St. Charles County. Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel? Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes. Okay, Bill number 5347 has passed.
Okay. Bill number 5347 has passed. We have no bills for introduction, I guess, because of the, you know, timeframe here. Let me make the first announcement here. Let me remind you folks that we will be meeting next Monday. We have a revised calendar because of Christmas. We do this every year in December where instead of the second and fourth Mondays, we go with the first and the third Mondays. So, we will be meeting on December the 2nd, which is actually next Monday, and then again on December the 16th. And that, of course, puts us away from the Christmas holiday. Any other announcements?
I have an announcement. December 7th is the Fines Christmas Parade. It's our 15th annual, so there's a 5K launch starting at 10:00. We have a beer town with bands and vendors and it's a great thing, great turnout, a lot of good people down there and it raises money for the little town of Fines, so hope people come down.
And the color guard will be there.
Just no horses.
No horses.
Except for the farm, people.
Any other announcements? Okay. We wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and enjoy your holidays and we adjourn. Thank you, folks.
Did you make a statement?
Oh, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right. Aye. Go ahead.